I would have first started, my first year was over when we graduated that. So I was a student teacher of your last semester. I already knew Casey. Well, yeah, my, he and my daughter told me, so they knew each other.
Adam? How are you?
Her husband went and he had zero interest, so he just had to quit. And my other daughter went down too, and she just said, I mean, she and Peter were at lunch together.
I know.
They're both totally divorced. Meanwhile, Christian, the extra one was down. My daughter's, one of my grandsons.
Less, I don't want to do anything dangerous.
And he, he is. He looks just like. We get them every weekend. They drop off around five o'clock or something. Yeah, because they're in school, they just sort of. Yeah, and they, we had them.
Am I right?
You are.
It's fifty-fifty.
Sure.
Be right here.
I'm with you.
We need to sit by her.
I'll just leave you.
Oh.
Pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen, twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is published in the back room, or the back of the room near the intern's door. The purpose of this meeting is to receive an update on the strategic plan of action. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm electorally just to declare under the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Marco. All right, roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger. Full. Here. Head.
Present.
Holman. Juarez.
Here.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Tealyn. Seven present.
Thank you, and since it's a workshop, not a meeting, we don't have to excuse absences.
Yep.
All right, so moving on to item D, new and miscellaneous business. Item D one A, the strategic plan of action update with Dr. John Crowe.
Thank you. President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board, and Interim Superintendent Ray. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us this evening. We are here to present the second eighteen-month update on goals as outlined in our current strategic plan of action. For those of you who did not participate in the process last time, the way these six goals were identified was Board of Education members rank ordered the remaining goals that were not covered during our first update. And as indicated here, academics, academics goal one, staffing goal three, financial accountability goal three, and ethic of care goals one, five, and seven were identified. So the process for this evening will be each goal staff member or members will come to the microphone, give an update on their goals, and then be open for questions. Because we have six goals in ninety minutes, each presentation will be around seven to ten minutes with five to eight minutes for questions and answers. Because we want to be respectable, respectful of everyone's time, my role here is to keep track of the time and facilitate the discussion. Are there any questions?
Any questions, colleagues? No?
Okay.
I think it sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce our first presenter for the evening, Ms. James Casey Hughes.
Thank you. My name is Casey Hughes. I am the Director of Data and Analytics in the Research Department. I appreciate being here this evening and having your time to talk about goal one under the strategic plan of action, or excuse me, goal one under academics in the strategic plan of action. The academic dashboard was developed by the Research Division and IMS and was made available to staff in September of two thousand and twenty-one. This dashboard was an enhancement and revisioning of the previous academic dashboard that has been in use in these school districts since two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. The dashboard includes both the intervention indicator and assessment reports, which we'll go over this evening, and are available to all instructional staff, from the teacher to the principal. Users only have access to the students that they have an educational need to access per FERPA. And so this means that a teacher only has access to the students that are in their courses or in their classes, but a principal would have access to all students at their school. Overall, the goal of this dashboard is to make accessing student data easy so that staff can focus on using that data instead of trying to gather that information. The main purpose of the intervention indicator report in this dashboard is to bring together key student academic and engagement indicators in real time in a single and consistent location to help identify student needs for instructional decisions and interventions. The purpose of the assessments report in the intervention, in the dashboard is to provide student level aggregate and trend data for both summative and interim assessments, course grades, and student attendance for a group of students at the school. This report puts assessment data into the hands of school staff for use in school improvement planning and to help guide instructional decisions. The dashboards are housed in Tableau. This is the data visualization and analytics tool that the district uses. The dashboards are separated by school level, and on your screen you can see elementary, middle, and high school. And each dashboard includes both the assessments report and the intervention indicator report. So the dashboard as a whole includes these two separate reports. The intervention indicator report displays student demographics and anywhere from ten to fourteen indicators defined as positive, neutral, or negative. These indicators include the most recent data on metrics like map assessment scores, course grades, NSGAS assessment levels, credit accumulation at the high school and middle school level, GPA, attendance, and even the number of schools a student has attended in that school year. Indicators are blue when they are positive or neutral, and they are orange when they are negative. Colors and symbols on the dashboard give users a visual understanding of how a student is doing at a glance. These indicators are also summed in a final indicator count in the dashboard. This count helps identify students who may have very few indicators or lots of indicators, depending on the need of the school or the topic that they're discussing. This report also includes a student detail report that includes one student's map, course grades, and attendance metrics over multiple years. Oftentimes, a report like this can be used to have a conversation about a student's overall progress for that, for that one individual. The assessments report, so the other report in the dashboard, provides an aggregate and trend of multiple assessments, course grades, for the currently enrolled population at the school. This data can be filtered by identifiers like grade level, course enrollment, and multiple demographic groups, and it allows users to look at specific groups of students at their school. Users can also easily download all available assessment information for their student population, something that would have required multiple sources and multiple queries previously, making it much more accessible and easier to use for, for school staff. The training on access and use of this dashboard relies on a train-the-trainer model as well as asynchronous or on-demand resources. The Research Division has been training since two thousand and twenty-one and continues to train groups and individuals while also creating these training materials such as videos and presentations that are accessible to all instructional staff. Academic data representatives, or ADRs, are trained at regularly scheduled monthly ADR meetings where the use of the dashboard is modeled by school staff. These dashboards have been a part of the ADR meetings in the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three school years, and will continue to be a part of these meetings and modeling going forward. School principals and instructional leadership teams are trained at these school data retreats, which happen twice a year. Again, the academic dashboard is modeled at these meetings for staff. Again, they have happened in the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and will continue to be a part of these data retreats in the future. Individual school staff members have also reached out for training across the past two years and in this school year, and we've also presented to multiple departments, including Student Community Services and the Curriculum Instruction and Support Departments as a part of their department meetings. We've recently presented at the Principal Institute, the MTSSB and SEL Conference this summer, the District Professional Learning Day, and at Freshman Academy Lead Meetings, most recently. In addition to the in-person training, we have created several on-demand resources that can be used by all instructional staff. These include a user guide and a Tableau troubleshooting and best practices guide that are accessible inside of the tool and inside of the dashboard. These include definitions of all the available data and metrics as well as some common tips and tricks on how to use the dashboard. Additionally, we've created ten training videos, broken into one- to two-minute sessions, that allow individuals to go access these trainings on demand whenever they need to refresh around how to access, use the dashboard, download information. Any, any different part of using that dashboard can be accessed in those training videos. Finally, feedback. Links are included in each dashboard so that as users use the tool, they can go in and provide feedback in the moment. So if they find something that they need to, to give us information or feedback on, they can create a survey. That survey information goes directly to research staff, and then we determine if we need to respond in that moment, or how we need to proceed. Feedback generally includes things like possible bugs that users might find or additional data that they wish was in the dashboard or functionality. Just recently, we found that a filter wasn't working as we expected it to, and so we were able to change that very quickly and let the user know that we, we fixed that problem. Other issues require more time, and so this is something that we, we capture from all of our users. We keep that information and we share it with IMS, and this will help guide our next round of development as we update the dashboard. This is a tool that we don't believe is ever really finished, and as we use this feedback, we will continue to try to develop the dashboard for the current and future needs of our users as they, as they use the dashboard throughout the, the school years. And with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Perfect, thank you. Questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you. This is a fascinating tool. It's amazing. Just a quick question. Does this tool work on a per-student, per-school, and district-wide basis, depending on what buttons you push or not?
Yes, well.
Looking at it district-wide is probably too much, but.
So it actually doesn't work district-wide. It does work at a school level.
School level.
And so the intervention indicator specifically is listing out individual students, and so a district view of that would be quite overwhelming. And really, these tools are oriented to be used at the, the school level. They are like in-time intervention tools, so most appropriately, it's, it's filtered at the school level.
Can you tell if teachers are using it or not? Because I can imagine that it would be a little intimidating to some, some old teachers.
Yep.
So, I mean, if you see that nobody's using it or accessing it, is there any way for you to reach out and offer a, a one-on-one session, for example?
Yeah, so we, we know some teachers are using it. To your point, that's kind of the, that might be the hardest to, users to get, using the tool most often. We have about five hundred unique users that we saw over the last year. They average about six uses of the dashboard on average, and we had about four thousand accesses of, of each of the, the reports. So we do see some pretty robust use. Again, we try to model the use of the dashboard at our ADR meetings and in a number of different circumstances. Again, kind of relying on that train-the-trainer model where we have instructional staff kind of, you know, adjacent to the teacher that is getting instruction on this, and then hopefully they can take it back into the building and then help instruct teachers on how to use that in their, in their classroom for individual students.
So I guess that was my question, because it does seem like it would be remarkably useful, but I think I did see someplace the five hundred number or something, and five hundred out of thousands. Seems like there's room for growth, but you're, you're sort of tracking that and keeping opportunities out there for people to learn how to use it?
Yeah, so we, we do track users, and we know how often it's being accessed. And I think what happens is the, the schools will use it at teaming meetings. They'll use it in, you know, all together, as opposed to like an individual using it. And so I think you might have one user that's pulling down the information, but the conversation is happening amongst multiple staff members, maybe at a grade level meeting or, or team meeting.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Ms. Full?
Thank you. I was wondering, have you heard of any teachers or principals or staff at the school using this tool and then developing interventions to address some of their findings? Have you heard about any specific interventions?
Specific interventions? So I know that at our ADR meetings, we do kind of model, again, the use of the dashboard, and so we talk about, you know, isolating to a grade level. We talk about isolating to maybe a set of, of individual students who maybe have multiple negative indicators. And then for us, it's, it's getting them the skills to access that information, and then the school's trying to find the best course of action for each individual student. And so sometimes that might be a SAT that needs to be held with an individual student. I know we're working recently with OnTrack data, and it's about maybe getting individual student names to a counselor for them to go have a conversation about, you know, credits they might be missing. So I think there's, there's lots of different ways that schools can use the information. We do try to model some of that.
So it sounds like most of the interventions are kind of like on a per-student level. It's not like looking at a program or a class that we offer and then saying, "Oh, maybe we could like change something or fix something."
Well, I would say both, both pieces of information can be gained from, from the information, right? So you can look at this information maybe at a class level, and you might notice something different for one teacher compared to the other. Maybe you've got, you know, two second-grade teachers, and you, you look at them separately, and you see differences between those classes. So there's the ability to kind of look at the information at that maybe program level, but also at the individual student level. And I think we do try to model kind of looking at it from both of those sides, right? The individual student, but also, you know, if, if you find an issue in English, right, that you can look at your English courses, your English teachers, and see where students are most struggling. So kind of using it in both ways.
Thank you. Ms. Juarez?
I'm sorry, but I just need a little bit more clarification here. I'm looking at this assessments page that you have for an example for elementary. So what exactly does that mean for listening? What is it that you're looking at here?
Yeah, so this first page of the assessments dashboard is really just an overview of whatever students that, that the, the user has filtered to at their school. It gives them trend information on a number of assessments and attendance information for that population. So it's kind of like an at-a-glance and then an over-time perspective of those students. And so when you're looking at listening, I believe you're looking at the, the ELPA scores probably. So that's a component of the ELPA exam, the, the English Language Proficiency Exam that is given by the, by the district and is given to all English language learners in the state. So it's just a component of that exam. And so, for instance, you could maybe switch between grade levels of your EL students, and you might see that the listening scores for one group of ELs might be different than the other. And so that's where you can get to, okay, what are, what, you know, what's going on with our seventh-grade students that's, that's maybe not the same for our sixth-grade students?
But, so for listening, does that mean that, you know, a student's actually wearing headphones and you're evaluating how they're listening to a story or something? I'm still at a, a little at a loss.
I, I hope that, I wish I could give you a full answer on the, the ELPA exam, but I do not have specifics on exactly how ELPA is given.
Okay, I'll look at it further. Thank you.
We have about one minute left.
Ms. Cassidy?
Okay, I'll be quick. Sorry. Okay, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So a building can only look at, for instance, a principal can only look at its students within its building, and a teacher could only look at the students in their classroom, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this made me think about while we were talking about just the different assessments. Is there, if a teacher's evaluating a student, I see a teacher using this for many different ways, does this talk to Infinite Campus at all? So that obviously if there's an issue with the student that needs to be addressed with the parent, they can correlate it back to Infinite Campus, which is what your parent is looking at?
Yeah, most of the information is coming from Infinite Campus.
That's what I, yeah, it kind of seems similar.
And, and what we would suggest is that as you use this dashboard, right, there is more information in, in Infinite Campus that you might have to go gather, look, understand about an individual student, right? One of the things that we, we try not to do is put everything in one place. We like to think there's, there's a way to have a tool that gives the answer to everything. It's just not possible in this. So what we've done is kind of focus on those academic indicators that are important. From there, there's lots of different ways that a school might, might take that information. Going to Infinite Campus, looking at student and parent contact might be the next step. A lot of different places to go with additional information in Infinite Campus.
That makes sense that it is built from Infinite Campus because it looks very similar to what, a lot of what we see as parents.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cracky?
How does the way that the teachers or principals look at this? I'm talking about a seasoned teacher who's been doing it for a very long time, and she gets into the depth of her students. So this is a tool, but she was already doing these kinds of things. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that, that our instructional staff have been doing these types of things forever. This is simply trying to take the information and maybe put it into a slightly easier place to, to get, right? Where you don't have to maybe go to, to ten different tabs to see, you know, a number of pieces of information about one student. On one line, you can get an understanding of what's going on for a student.
The teachers probably do network with the counselor of that particular child. You know, they have meetings, and they have grade-level meetings, and they have all these about the different students, sometimes with five people there. If the child is struggling.
Yes, SAT meetings, yeah.
So this is a faster way to pull it together. They still have a meeting now.
Correct, yeah, faster way to pull it together, a way of pulling together lots of students at one time as opposed to maybe one individual student, and then using it from there.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you, Mr. Head. I just want to follow up on sort of what Bree asked and Tracy. I understand that as a teacher, I'm looking at all of the students in my class, and I'm seeing how it's going. As Bree was asking about, I believe, at the school level, is somebody, and this might be a question for Mr. Ray more than you, but is somebody tasked with looking, like, in the high school, like you said, all of the freshman English classes and identifying? Oh, my goodness, there's a significant difference between this class and the rest of them. And then further, is there somebody tasked with seeing how freshman English in North is doing and looking at all of, at district-wide, basically? Is that, is that something somebody does, and do they use this tool for that purpose?
We certainly can, yeah. I, I would say that there are staff members across all of our levels of, of school, multiple at each building, that would use this kind of at an administrative level, right? Looking at how the whole school is doing. Academic data representatives, the principal, assistant principals, data principals at the high school level, you know, department heads, curriculum specialists at the high school level, instructional facilitators at the, the elementary level. So there's, there's lots of different staff that, that would maybe more, more highly use this type of a dashboard. At the district level, we definitely do use this as kind of one way to look at information. We're also kind of using all of this information all the time as well, so we've kind of got, you know, large data sets of this as well that we're using to look at this information maybe across schools.
All right, real quick, just following up a little bit on that question. So looking at the indicators here and the assessments, I'm guessing this is a tool that probably doesn't change a whole lot. You know, it, it probably updates quarterly or when, you know, when new test scores are coming in. So it's not like there's a need for a teacher to log in, say, every morning and check their student's progress.
Well, so some information will update every evening, so attendance will update every evening. Grades will change as grades change, so that will, that will update more often. Assessments are a little fewer or fewer across the year, right? So MAP is three times a year, so those will get updated about a week after the, the MAP window closes. So there, there, some of it's updating every evening, and some of it does take a little bit longer as those assessments are given.
Okay, perfect. And then, and I, I know you said that you're still kind of rolling out train, or I shouldn't say rolling out training, but we're still training the schools and, and staff on how to, how to utilize it. Is the, is the goal to have like a, a data representative or a counselor or someone at each school identified who's kind of in charge of, you know, identifying students who might need interventions? Or is it going to be kind of up to the individual teachers or?
Yeah, there is an academic data representative at, at every school. Again, and there's also multiple, multiple administrators at, at our schools that would be using information like this. So again, I, I don't think we, we believe that training on this is ever done. You know, there's new staff all the time, so it's, it's ongoing effort to both train on this information, talk about its use, as well as continue to develop it and improve on the tool.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none, we're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are going to discuss strategic priority two, staffing, goal three, and giving the presentation will be Kenyon Chisholm and Greg Vetz.
Good evening. My name is Kenyon Chisholm from the Office of Professional Learning and Development and with me here is my colleague, Dr. Greg Betts from Human Resources. We will be providing an update on priority two, goal three, focused on employee development programs, grow-your-own programs, succession planning, and employee retention. We'll begin by discussing our work in the area of professional growth and acknowledgement. The activities you see on this slide are initiatives that support educators and staff and their personal and professional growth. We'll begin in the upper right-hand corner of the circle in the navy blue area. We have provided a full day and a half of classroom management training for over 1,180 teachers since 2020. Many of these staff were new teachers when they completed the training. We have also offered follow-up training throughout the summer and school year facilitated by the 23 trainers that we have developed within our school district. As we move clockwise to the next circle in teal, you will see that in the 2021-22 school year, we began supporting principal development by training experienced principals to be mentors for new principals. Currently, we have over 30 principals who are trained as mentors. Also, in 2021, our parent-to-teacher program was expanded to include a special education endorsement. Starting in 2022, we were able to offer staff an opportunity to enroll in graduate classes through UNO. Teachers can enroll in up to nine credit hours and they are able to select courses that further their knowledge and skills in the content area they teach, pedagogy, child development, or OPS student career pathways that they support. In the yellow, you can see that we have had over 800 teachers participate in this program since it was initiated. Last school year, the Office of Professional Learning and Development developed and published a staff professional learning catalog with over 200 offerings for certified and classified staff, which you can see noted in the green section. And finally, as part of our efforts at succession planning, we are working across departments to align content within the various school and district leadership meetings to better streamline learning for current and aspiring leaders.
Thank you. And onboarding is a process that takes place within a staff member's initial eight to 12 months in their position. It commences with an orientation, which marks the primary phase of the onboarding process. So to illustrate, when a new staff member enrolls such as transportation, nutrition, operations, office, security, or early childhood para, attends a morning orientation conducted by Human Resources, they then receive specialized training from their respective department to better equip them for their specific role. Student interns, on the other hand, receive supplementary reading training provided by the curriculum instruction team to support students during next-level learning. During the summer, we collaborated with professional learning and the technology department to introduce Tech Camp, and this is where we were ensuring all new hires received their devices and training before their official start date. We have a series of events in place for student interns, student teachers, and new hires, facilitating opportunities for them to network with their peers and other leaders within our organization. Among our recent gatherings, we hosted an event at the Henry Dooley Zoo where we invited all new teachers and student teachers to join their principals for lunch. Additionally, we organized a student-teacher welcome morning at Lewis and Clark Middle School. Here, student teachers interact with multiple departments to learn about the amazing ways we support our students. Our check-ins initiative includes a 60-day check-in system for all new staff. During these check-ins, our employee navigator engages with new hires to assess their progress and determine any additional resources or support they may require to enhance their chances of success.
Succession planning, retention, and growth has been another key focus within this goal. The activities you see here are a few of the ways that we are working to prepare leaders for the future of the Omaha Public Schools, retain current educators and staff, and provide growth opportunities for educators and staff in a variety of roles. We'll start at the top with ILEAD. ILEAD is a leadership development program aimed at building a pipeline of aspiring principals. We have had two cohorts of the program and 47 graduates. Of the 47, 32 have moved into advanced leadership roles. Next, our bilingual leaders program is in its second year of implementation and we had 14 graduates last year. All 14 remain with the school district and several have moved into administrative roles, with many others currently participating in our other leadership development programs. Our LEAP program is also in its second year and focused on developing the skills of assistant principals. LEAP stands for Leading with Excellence as an Assistant Principal, and we meet quarterly for professional learning targeted toward assistant principal professional development. Out of the approximately 80 attendees that have participated, 17 have moved into advanced leadership roles. We're also offering opportunities for graduate credit aimed toward teachers who want to increase their content knowledge and become eligible to teach dual enrollment courses in our high schools. We have had 53 high school teachers take advantage of this opportunity.
Going to the bottom row, the parent-to-teacher program remains a resounding success as Omaha Public Schools persistently offers para educators a well-defined pathway to achieving certification as an elementary teacher. The ambassador program represents an innovative approach within Omaha Public Schools where our dedicated teachers and leaders actively participate in various recruitment events such as job fairs, college visits, and this helps to bolster our teacher recruitment efforts. The retention toolkit established in 2021 serves as a valuable resource tailored for building leaders, equipping them with the tools and strategies necessary to effectively retain their existing staff members. Student teachers, we achieved a remarkable increase in our student-teacher placements by introducing a stipend program. This marks a remarkable 121% growth comparing the 2021 to 22 school year to the 2022-2023 school year. And right now, we are marking 242 student teachers for this school year. Our student-teacher hires have surged by an impressive 149% from the 2021-22 academic year to the 2022-23 academic year. This exceptional growth has been a valuable asset in ensuring that every student has access to a dedicated teacher. Furthermore, our outlook is optimistic as we have already secured commitments from 39 student teachers who will begin their placements at the beginning of the second semester, and this is on par with last year.
And to conclude, we wanted to share some of our next steps with you. Our next steps include working with, working to align OPS values to employ recognition programs such as 30 Ways to Say Yay, as well as ensuring that these values are explicitly embedded in employee orientation or onboarding processes. We're also working to identify and implement professional development systems that are relevant to employees in various roles across the district with mechanisms for feedback to inform improvements. We're also working with colleagues from our research team to develop a comprehensive listening strategy so that we can gather feedback about the current and potential onboarding and staff development activities that we offer. And our workaround retention will continue by further reviewing current retention rates for certified and classified staff roles so that we can identify new ways to support retention in high-needs areas. Thank you.
So we have about six and a half minutes for questions. Perfect. Colleagues, questions? Ms. Sardenberger?
Thank you very much. I'm looking on apparently page 13, the enhanced onboarding and support. Who does the, I'm looking at check-ins, who does that check-in, three a year for the new staff?
Sure, so that is our employee navigator who then follows up. We have a new tracking system, so when someone calls in, we can see what maybe they need help with, what's going well. Sometimes if there's a really positive thing, we'll share that back with the principal. If there's a question or something they need help with, we'll share that as well.
So that's, somebody in the TAC building does the check-in?
Yep, that's someone, yep.
Is that limited to first year only? Because I don't know the statistics, I'm sure you do, but it's like after three years or some number where teachers go, this isn't for me. So do we do this for that whole, you know, three-year period or just their first year? It's easy for me to say people could be doing more work, I know, but I'm just asking.
Right now, it is in their first year.
Have we considered if it's possible to do it past their first year or some form of it, maybe check in with them less often or something? Just asking.
Yeah, so this first started with operations and nutrition only. So as we've continued to build and grow, now we're at all staff and so those conversations have come up, we're just not there yet.
The next item on there, the support structures, is for student teachers. A similar question, and that is, again, thinking about our new teachers. I mean, I know that on one hand, we're trying to hire as many new teachers as possible, but obviously retaining them once we get them. So, and maybe I missed the part where you were talking about, for new teachers, do we have ongoing support structures like here workshops and social gatherings for new teachers? Did you tell us about that and I missed it? Sorry.
We do have monthly meetings for new teachers where they meet with typically their curriculum instruction support, TLC. We also each have a mentor that they meet with informally and regularly. And then we have the new teacher social at the beginning of the year, which they are all invited to. So we are working to ensure that there are multiple opportunities throughout the school year for teachers not only to learn, but to network and collaborate with one another so that they have a support system with one another.
Not just within the building, but there are systems outside the building too. I am now looking on page 14. I have to admit, I'm a little concerned of how many people that we're offering these programs to, which is the same as no longer teaching in the classroom, as they're moving into these admin roles and we're offering graduate credits and whatnot. You know, no complaints there, but it concerns me a little bit because I know that a lot of teachers think that's where they should be going and it seems like a big number coming out of the classrooms towards admin. I don't know if that's, if you track that at all.
Are you speaking specifically to the number of teachers that were taking graduate courses or just the?
I think I'm looking at, and maybe I didn't understand it, the ILEAD and the LEAP program. One had 47 people, one had 80, and those are presumably people who are in the classroom and are now going into admin positions. Is that right?
That's a great question. So both of those programs, the participants are currently in leadership positions.
Good to know, thank you.
And so they are typically people that are looking to move into principalship or an advanced leadership role.
Great, so they're already not in the classroom.
Correct.
My last question was on your last slide, whatever that is, 17, maybe 18, your very last point was to further analyze current retention rates for certified and classified staff roles to identify new opportunities for greater retention. The flip side of new opportunities for greater retention might be, why are you leaving? Do, what kind of exit data do you collect and what do you do with it? Because I think there was an article in the paper just yesterday about some consortium of educators or something that got together. And if I remember correctly, one of their, the points they made is the main reason people leave is building leadership. I don't know if that's true or not, but do you have some way of finding that or tracking why people are leaving and seeing if there's something, you know, if they're leaving because their husband's in the military, not so much we can do about that. But if they're leaving because of something we can fix, do you identify that and then fix it?
We do have an exit survey that we partner with research on. And so every staff member who leaves us has the opportunity to fill that out. Some do, some don't. We also meet with principals and sometimes they have more accurate information to share. So many times, you're right, it's, I'm married to someone and my job's taking me somewhere else. But if it's leaving education, we do like to know, like, what was the reason why you left?
Well, not just leaving education, but leaving OPS because that's a problem or presumably a problem as well. And I would only suggest if the information in that article is correct, that oftentimes it's the principal is the building leadership is why they're leaving. I just wanted to make sure you had some source of information other than building leadership to make sure that you know if that's what the problem is. And you're saying you do collect that information?
Yes.
And then you tell somebody? Thank you.
We tell the chief talent officer.
And then he tells somebody or whatever. Thank you.
Just so that we all know, we are at time and I realize that probably doesn't matter. Ms. Voll?
Thank you. I don't know if you would specifically know the answer to my first question, which is, is this the only goal in the strategic plan of action that addresses teacher retention? Or are there other goals in our strategic plan that also address it? Does anybody know?
I'm pretty sure this is the only one.
The only one, okay. Okay, thank you, Jane, for asking all those questions that I was going to ask about teacher retention, just because it is so incredibly important that we concentrate on keeping the teachers that we have here and also understanding why they leave. And so I think you answered all my questions, Jane. I would just, you asked all my questions, I would just continue to emphasize the importance of teacher retention and incorporating it in more aspects of the work that we do.
Ms. Krackey?
Because we're doing these things prior during the year, as we get to January, are we seeing more new hires filling our positions? And can you tell us how many new hires we have achieved out of this program for January and the next year? Because I think they've already been trained now.
Just talking about student teachers, right now we have 39 and we are predicting we'll be in the 40s, and that is very similar to last year. We also do get new hires who come in because of whatever reason they have to relocate to Omaha.
But last year, you weren't using this program previously. Were you using this program last year and those that are coming in to the program, they already have been trained and now they're, they are in OPS, they are applying for a job?
New teacher orientation and onboarding?
The ones that have already gone through all of this training as a para, et cetera. How many did you get from that?
Oh, the parent-to-teacher.
Okay, okay. Well, typically, we probably have about 15 to 20 a year that are coming out of the parent-to-teacher program. And they do go through the same orientation and onboarding processes as our other new teachers do. So they'll get that same training.
Do you think that we should be having a higher rate from the amount of pairs that are doing the training and aren't moving forward to being a teacher? Yes or no? That doesn't sound like a lot. 15 doesn't sound like a lot when we think of our needs. So is this paying off?
Yes, I believe it is paying off. I believe the participants that are in the program are completing the program. So in that sense of your question, we are getting out of it what is being put into it because the ones that are in the program are completing it. And obviously, we are limited to the number of participants by the funding that we have each year to pay for their courses that they're taking.
So how are we limited? Is there a pool of money we go to, a pile? Where is the money that we get for this training?
It's grant-funded.
Grant? Okay, is it a national grant or what kind of a grant is that, state?
I believe it's a local grant.
Okay. Sounds like we still need more funding.
Yeah, that would be great. That would be excellent.
Thank you. Any further questions, colleagues? Can I just make one clarifying comment? While it doesn't call out specifically retention, staffing goal two... staffing goal two says by June of 2025, a pipeline of employees will be developed to assume leadership roles so that ninety-eight percent of administrative positions in each school and ninety-five percent of district leadership positions are filled prior to the start of each school year. So while it's not exactly stating that.
And staff, the strategic priority two, staff. The overall goal, the priority is recruiting and retaining a high-quality qualified development. Develop staff is the most essential component to a successful school district. So it is part of that strategic priority two.
All right, I think we're good to move on, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So next up is strategic priority three, financial accountability and its goal three, and Mr. Shane Ryan.
Good evening, thank you very much for the opportunity to provide an update on this goal. We were charged with implementing a participatory budget process beginning in August of 2022 aligned to student needs, district priorities, and the school improvement planning. We began early in 2022 in the process of developing the 2022-23 budget for the district. We chose to implement this through a phased-in approach beginning with central office budgets for the 2223 budget year. The central office process involves a priority ranking of all requests for new or additional funding and identification of potential reductions of funding that would have minimal impact on student learning. All chiefs priority rank their requests for new or additional funding and then all requests are evaluated by the executive council and ranked in a comprehensive list. Once preliminary property evaluations are received from the county assessors and state aid is certified by the Nebraska Department of Education, new or additional funding is included in the budget based on the priority rankings and available funding. The potential reductions are also reviewed if projected funding is limited or to reallocate funding to the prioritized requests. The implementation process continued with school-based off-formula allocations directed by central office departments in the 2324 budget year. These off-cycle formula allocations include funds for school building utilities and operations, cyclical replacement of band uniforms, athletic uniforms, and other student-related equipment. The budget development process for 2425 for the upcoming school year will include a review of the per-student formula allocation that makes up the majority of school and program discretionary spending that principals and program directors administer. This priority-based budget approach is better defined and more structured than previous processes. It asks district leaders to take a critical look at their budgets annually to ensure that our resources are allocated to activities that are expected to provide the best results for our students. It is also a more collaborative process with all requests reviewed collectively by the executive council and all requests priority ranked collectively across all divisions and departments. The key benefits of this approach include greater input from the executive council and district leadership, more financial accountability for central office budgets, better allocation of our limited resources to our most effective and essential programs. And finally, it begins to develop a process to identify areas where resources can be reallocated in years where they may be limited in the future. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the process that we've been going through the last several years.
Thank you, questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdmutter.
In twenty-five words or less, how is this different from what you used to do? I mean, I know you just told me what you do now, but how, and why it's better, but how is it different?
So I think in the past, we didn't take as critical a look as we could have across all of the different competing requests. And so when this strategic plan goal was identified and we were tasked with developing a methodology to implement it, we looked at a couple different processes. The initial request was to do a zero-based budget. That is a very time-consuming process across all levels of the organization. The process that we did implement beginning in 2223 is a process that's very similar to how the state goes through and does their biennial budgets with the legislature. So that was a process that I had been very familiar with in my seven years as the budget director at the State Department of Education and tasking chiefs and department heads to go through their budgets and identify some potential areas where reductions could be made if absolutely necessary and to priority rank their requests for new additional funding makes a more organized opportunity for chiefs as a whole and specifically the superintendent and the budget nautic committee to take a look at those different priorities that are being included in the budget moving forward. That's more than twenty-five words, sorry.
Clearly it required it, thank you very much.
Mr. Teal.
I can definitely see a lot, and a lot of what you just said especially, how this helps us, gets us in a position to better align to our priorities. There is, the other, the other element that's stated in the goal is that it's a participatory budget process. And can you speak maybe to how we've implemented that idea?
Certainly, so we chose to start with central office budgets because those are the areas where we have the most control to allocate resources. So we started with a process of meeting with the chiefs and their identified leadership team in an individual basis to talk about what their budget was in the prior year, what types of funding requests they had, what types of new activities they were contemplating doing, and developing that list and helping them analyze their budgets and doing that ranking and then having the collective meeting as an executive council. I think one of the things that you may be asking about in the participatory process is a lot of this is largely focused at the district level and not necessarily at the school building level. And there are a couple different reasons for that. Number one, we want to make sure that our building administrators are able to focus on their most important job and that's working with the staff and the students to deliver the high-quality education that we're all striving for. We have tried to streamline and make the budgeting process as efficient as possible. So we handle the three biggest buckets that a lot of building leadership has to worry about. Number one is staffing. Given our current situation with the limited staffing resources, human resources has staffing conferences beginning very early in the calendar year for the following school year on what their projected enrollment is, what we think their class sizes are gonna look like based on the number of staff that we anticipate being able to retain and recruit for the upcoming school year. Unfortunately, because of the staffing shortage out there and teachers and paros and other areas in the school building, there isn't necessarily a lot of flexibility where we can offer a principal the opportunity to take some number of dollars out of their operating budget to put towards additional staff. That's just not the world we live in right now. If we get to a point in time where the, the staffing is available to make those considerations, then we can take a look at making that adjustment. The second piece is the off-formula piece and that's where we centrally allocate the utility expenses, stuff that is really micromanaging by a principal and should be handled centrally and administratively. And then also that making sure that we have regular and reoccurring cycles of replacement for those semi-permanent items, uniforms. And then the last thing, and this is really where the principals do have the most control over their budgets and that's the per-student formula allocation. And that's why we're looking at it for the school budget for next year. It has been relatively static over the last ten years and given the inflationary pressures, we think it's a, a great opportunity now that we've done the first two steps to take a look at that per-student formula allocation, make sure that that's sufficient, much as we did with our student activity fee recommendation, that we're giving people the equitable budgets they need to operate their discretionary funds.
Ms. Voll.
Thank you. So I'm wondering through the participatory, I can't say the word, I'm so sorry, my brain is jumbled tonight. Through the, the new budget process, how do you decide what gets funded and what doesn't if there's a request?
So most of the requests come again from a district perspective. And so we meet with the chiefs. They identify things that they're anticipating needing additional funding for or requesting additional funding for. We help them prepare a list of those requests and assist them in identifying what those potential costs could be, i.e. if it's a new staff member, how much would that person cost with their benefits? Or maybe some help with estimating what expenses would be for a project. They then, within their division, identify what they would do if they got the money to do that. What would my first priority be? What would my second priority be? So on and so forth. Then we take all of those from each of the chiefs and their divisions and then we rank those holistically. So you might have every chief's number one priority rise to the top. Maybe you have someone's number two priority take precedence over a number one priority in a different division. So we have some discussions about that. And then ultimately, we get to a point where there's some consensus and we stack hands and we wait to see what our projected revenue will be. And then recommendations are made, yes, we should definitely go this far down on the list. Here are some additional items that we might consider adding. And then here are the things that we think we just can't do at this point in time.
And will the whole district, including the, the building leadership and even the teachers and the other staff members, will, will they ever be included in this participatory budget process? Are there plans to do that? Or do you anticipate to just do it the way you've been doing it moving forward?
So Ms. Rakovsky, the district budget director, does meet regularly with principals, especially when we have newer leadership within a building, to help them go through their budget and manage it. We always have discussions with them on what their per-formula student allocation is and helping them to identify what they're going to spend that on, whether that be supplies and materials or purchase services for speakers within the school building or those types of activities. I do think when we get to a point where staffing is not as critical a concern as it is now and we have more flexibility, that that would be the point in time that we would start doing some more, some more in-depth discussions about what their building truly needs, whether that be staff or funding for supplies and materials and operating. I think if I asked all eighty-seven principals today, every one of them would want more staff. Every time I visit a building, how's your day going? What can we do for you other than more staff because we just don't have any to get? And so I, I think it really will be dependent on the medium to long term and how our staffing goes and what we do moving forward in the strategic plan.
Okay, so you're saying if staffing wasn't so much of an issue, then we'd be able to incorporate more participatory budget processes within the, this district, or I mean, the building leadership?
So I think that would be the main area that they would desire more participation in, based on my feedback from them. Certainly, one of the reasons we're looking at the per-formula student allocation is that is their main source of discretionary spending. That was one of the reasons we looked at the student activity fee and changing the allocation of that for the current school year is because of the feedback we got from building principals, especially at the middle school level, that the activity fees weren't enough to cover the costs of operating their extracurricular activities such as football and basketball and cross-country. And so we do talk with them, we do listen to them, we do hear them. It is, it's a challenge when there are eighty-seven different locations with eighty-seven different wants, needs, and desires. And so we do make sure that we are in communication with them on a regular basis, listening to their concerns, taking that back and acting on those as much as we can at a district level. And certainly, we're always looking to evolve this process. This is not something that is set in stone at this point in time. It's year three, we've added a new layer to it every year. And I'm certain that as we go through the development process for 2425, we'll identify two or three things that we want to change in the process as we move forward into future years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, any other questions, colleagues? Ms. Krakie.
I heard a lot about identifying students and meeting needs and we know that we give extra attention or try to to the students who are not performing. Now I want to go to the other end. I haven't heard anyone talking about higher-level students and how we are or are not able to meet their needs. Some of them are incorporated into our regular classes and then they get an extra project or something to do and that's not really the interaction that I think those students would benefit from. And they, high school is different. I think that they have a better chance of going to the AP classes and some of those. But elementary-wise, maybe even middle school, but certainly elementary, I don't think that they always get that extra touch. Did you ever hear that from the principals?
So I think certainly we're challenged in all areas of how we serve our students, whether those be those who identify as needing additional assistance or those who are excelling and need additional challenge. I, I think that based on the funding requests that we've seen over the last few years that we are doing as much as we can at this point in time and are always happy to review those requests for additional funding and evaluate them in the context of the district as a whole.
And I just feel real definite on the idea that we must provide for the students who are able to do more. And I think we should keep that in our focus all the time because other places do that and do offer things like that for the students, not like we used to because we were at the top of the heap with our offerings in, in the past. But that has been kind of slighted. I don't want it to be slighted, I want us to continue to keep getting there because it's really important for all of our students and to keep them in our district.
I, I think what I would add to that is the curriculum adoptions that we've been able to do over the last two years and anticipate doing next year is certainly a very good step in that direction, getting that refreshed and updated. And will provide some additional opportunities for, for our students to learn new stuff. And, you know, we're, we're happy to take a look at some of those advanced programs as they come to our attention and those requests come forward.
Mr. Smith.
So as we're looking at the funding for the schools, those things that are, those programs that are necessary, what is the equitable component that we have in place? And is that easily to identify when we go and look at the budget? That we did a roof here at North and we did a roof at Benson? And what does that look like? And then also, when you're addressing the formula, I might not have a big school, but the needs might be higher. So is there a needs-based kind of component when you're doing the formula?
So at this point in time, I'm gonna work backwards through your questions or at least try to. So I think at this point in time, the per-student formula allocation is a simple flat rate. The district does rely on The district does rely on federal funds through the Title I grant program to provide some of that more equitable additional funding. But that's certainly something that, as we did with the student activity fees, we may consider in a recommendation on the per-student formula allocation. So, nothing set in stone on where we're going with that, but we are, we do recognize that equal does not mean equitable, but the current paradigm is equal on that, with Title I being the main component to provide some of that more equitable funding. As far as those off-cycle allocations, we do try to do that as equitably as possible, recognizing that with nine high schools, that means if you're going to have a five-year replacement plan, that means you're doing two every year. Maybe you shorten that, maybe you have to stretch it out a little bit to six or seven, depending on what the current funding is. At this point in time, I don't see any immediate concerns with having to adjust those cycles. When you talk about things like facility needs, I work closely with Mr. Wakefield in district operations. We try to provide as large a budget as is practical for district operations through the special building fund levy and other additional general fund resources. And then he identifies, through his team and the facility study that's been ongoing, to identify where those critical needs are and deploy the resources there as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll be talking about Ethic of Care Goal One, and Kami Pacota.
My name is Kami Pacota, and I am the supervisor of attendance and school support liaisons in the Office of Student Community Services. Thank you for the opportunity to share strategic priority for Ethic of Care Goal One as it relates to student attendance. Our goal as a district, all schools and programs will demonstrate an increase of up to 2% in the percentage of students missing fewer than nine days. As we aim for success, our focus remains on increasing the number of students reaching 95% attendance or higher. When a student attends school 95% of the time throughout the school year, this means they have missed less than nine days of school. We know from our ongoing collaboration and partnership with the attendance works that every minute counts. When students attend 95% of the school year, they are more likely to gain math and reading skills in early grades, read on or above grade level in third grade, find academic success, including higher test scores across all grade levels, stay on track for graduation, connect socially and emotionally with peers and staff, participate and engage in academics, athletics, and extracurricular activities at their schools. In addition to our students, working with and supporting the entire family matters. Research also shows when families have positive relationships with the adults in their children's schools, they can work closely together to support student attendance. We have four key tools and four key strategies that we use to help improve student attendance. Our tools for success include the attendance dashboard that is reviewed by the school's attendance team in regular meetings that allows for the alignment of resources and supports while acknowledging student attendance successes and improvements. The attendance dashboard was developed in collaboration with IMS, Research and Student Community Services in the 2018-19 as we launched our attendance branding of Strive for 95, which means missing nine days or less throughout the school year. This dashboard was developed similarly to the academic dashboard, as Mr. Hughes previously described, to make assessing student attendance data immediate. The main purpose of the dashboard is to have attendance data in one place for staff to review with the goal of addressing any attendance concerns. Meeting on a regular basis to review the attendance dashboard, attendance teams made up of the building principal, assistant principal, school support liaison, school counselor, social worker, and attendance secretary utilize data to make informed decisions. During these attendance meetings, staff share pertinent information that allows the team to determine the barrier to attendance with the goal to align needed resources and supports. Resources may vary, and when collaborating with students and families, it is required to discuss the seven barriers to attendance. A student's health, educational counseling and evaluation, community agencies and services, family and individual counseling, and restorative justice practices or services. The attendance team also works to recognize and promote good attendance through communication of school-wide, grade-level, classroom, and teacher attendance success. Acknowledging attendance improvement reinforces the importance of attendance and builds connections between schools, students, families, and our communities. Strategies for success include awareness and communication, regular monitoring of student attendance data, district-level meetings, and community partnerships. Strategies for success include awareness, and is grounded in Board Policy 5008, student attendance, where attendance processes and practices have been outlined. Our team works closely with district communications and school leaders to ensure we provide attendance information to share with students, family, and our community. Our team is also very active at district-wide and community events to share and promote the importance of attending school on time and every day. Regular monitoring of student attendance begins in the classroom. The classroom culture and the teacher-student relationship influences a student's daily attendance. The attendance secretary and accurate and consistent attendance records are the next steps, followed by leadership prioritizing attendance and reviewing student attendance data during meetings. District-level meetings allow departments to work together to address student attendance. Each quarter, members of Student and Community Services and the Office of Accountability and School Improvement meet to review district and school attendance data to assist schools with improvement planning, interventions, and supports. In addition, ongoing professional development includes monthly meetings with members of each school's attendance team. Our fourth strategy includes our collaboration with community partners. The Omaha Public Schools has many community partners that we work side-by-side with to address attendance. We know this work takes many hands, and we are grateful for their support. As you can see in Slide 25, our efforts are making an impact at many schools. And we still have more to do. Fifty-two out of 94 schools and programs, or 55.3%, increased the percentage of students who attended for 95% or more this school year. Out of this group, 36 schools and programs, 38.3%, increased by 2% or more, meeting our strategic plan of action goal and their school improvement goal. We are committed to this attendance goal and the work needed to support our students and families. Our next steps include monitoring student attendance data through attendance team meetings and the enhancement of the attendance dashboard. These additional filters will allow teams to drill deeper into data on one dashboard rather than assessing other systems. District teams will meet monthly reviewing new trainings and updates. Members of the school attendance teams will attend monthly professional development. That includes new attendance research and actionable steps. Current community partnerships will be nurtured and expanded to explore a deeper understanding of student attendance. This includes our collaboration with Metropolitan Omaha Educational Consortium, Attendance Improvement Cohort. In closing, and most important, addressing school attendance will take a collaborative approach. Schools, students, and families working together aiming for success. Thank you.
Thank you. We have questions, colleagues?
We have about eight minutes for questions.
Thank you. Ms. Full?
Eight minutes.
Three minutes or eight minutes? I don't think it's going to be enough for this section.
Eighteen minutes?
My first question is, why do you think the elementary schools have a better likelihood of meeting that 2% increase? Because I'm just looking at the table provided here, and it's overwhelmingly, I know we have more elementary schools compared to like middle schools and high schools, but it's just still overwhelmingly, elementary schools are able to meet that 2% goal. Is there any explanation for that, why you think that is?
Typically, we're finding two themes, getting to school and family engagement. Oftentimes, if students aren't able to get themselves to school, or families aren't comfortable with the walk distance or riding public transportation, we have our great partnership with MAT, with our K-12 free bus rides, that support all of our families. And oftentimes, families might feel uncomfortable with that. Family engagement seems to be a bit stronger at the elementary level, and so we continue to try to find ways to bridge that gap, to work with our families and provide services, wraparound services, and build communication skills in our interactions with our middle schools and high schools.
Okay, thank you. So you would attribute middle schoolers and high schoolers missing school? Are there other reasons why they're missing school, other than transportation and the family engagement? What like comes out? Do we ask the students or the parents, you know, why we don't think their kids are getting to school?
Sure, we do. We'll have conversations whether they're, when the family's calling in to report the attendance event, or through our collaborative attendance improvement plans, counselors, social workers, and school support liaisons, as well as the elementary assistant principals having conversations and meetings with the family. And it varies from illness to medical, it also, mental health. We continue to see a growing need for supports in mental health and just wraparound services overall for our families as they're getting on track to returning to engagement and in-school learning.
How much does mental health come up, do you think, like either attributed to anxiety or depression, those types of issues? Like, where would you rank that on a scale?
I don't have, I don't have that exact data. I would certainly be able to gather some and provide that to Dr. McFarland. Families do share, whether it's a kindergarten leaving a parent for the first time and they're struggling to be a part, or someone who, a student who's been at home during the duration of the 19, 20, 2020, 21, 22 school year, and making that adjustment has been a little bit difficult. But families oftentimes are open. A lot of times, unfortunately, we are lacking that communication with families to further explain why students are at school. And so, we're trying to find additional ways for us to be able to bridge that gap and make them feel comfortable and trust and build that relationship so families can better explain to us. Because truly, as soon as we understand what that barriers, we can align those resources and supports, whether they're tiered supports within our buildings or our community partnerships that we build.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Erdmer?
Thank you, Mr. Head. Following up on what Ms. Full was talking about, I, when parents call at the school level, you know why someone's absent or why you're being told they're absent. It might really be because it's their birthday and they're going shopping, but whatever. You have some record of that. We started the evening with the massive data organization of other information. Do you have school-wide and/or district-wide data that shows, you know, a lot of illnesses? I mean, just what some of the top reasons are so we can address? Because maybe it's something that we could do on a more global basis, or district-wide rather, than just at a family basis. So do you keep track of the big picture?
We do. Thank you for that question. We do. We have it at the district level, we have it at the school level, we have it at the grade level. We have it, you know, broken down by middle, high, elementary programs. And so that, our attendance dashboard, the data comes directly from Infinite Campus, so that's why it's so imperative that teachers are taking accurate attendance all the way to the secretary, parents calling in and communicating with us for that attendance. That data is then all gathered into that attendance dashboard, broken into the codes that we find in our board policy.
The codes being?
For example, we have three unexcused, so absence, truant, or unverified. We have eight excused absences, ill, medical, religious holiday, post-secondary visit, military, suspensions, all of those codes.
Okay, that's, I think that's what I was asking. I know when I used to take attendance, it was just, they're here or they're not here.
Correct. At the teacher level, that's correct. At the teacher level, teachers are taking attendance daily in class, they're marking A, absent, or P, present. And then once it comes to the secretary, the front office, the secretary is checking emails, they're listening to voice messages, parents calling in, students coming in with notes, emails, teachers reporting what parents have shared with teachers. And so that's why it is so imperative, that communication between our families and the schools, finding that person that they trust, that they have a relationship with, and letting us know what's going on. And then those codes are changed into Infinite Campus, and then they're housed altogether into our attendance dashboard.
I'm going to follow up on the role of the parents in establishing relationships and helping them understand why 95% is important and so on and so forth. What kind of initiatives do you have that are specifically directed at parents? And presumably, that, one initiative works for elementary parents and another one for high school parents, but what are you doing to get them on board with this goal?
So as a district, we're training our staff. We attend events to SEL, the SEL MTSSB, making sure we put all of this information in the hands of our staff first and foremost. It is, it is a district focus, and so all of us need to be a part of the solution. All of us need to be part of putting the information out there. And then when we think about our schools, our schools have such unique diverse populations. And so we really do ask the schools to look at what they need to address, what might be going on within their building. And so that's why we have our attendance teams, and the attendance teams look at the data, and then they determine, whether maybe they're focusing, maybe they look at their attendance data and they determine it's fourth grade, fourth grade is struggling with attendance. And so they put, and they will have activities, they will, when they have math nights or reading nights or any type of night communications, we will ask that the school support liaison go to that event, and they will have tables set up. We also have bookmarks that talk about Strive for 95. We have attendance trackers. We also have trifolds, we have magnets. So we take all of the resources we can from the district office to get that into the hands of the families and the students, as well as the staff, and then attend events that the schools might be having in order to determine what we need to do to address the students who are struggling with attendance.
And you mentioned here a whole bunch of community partners. Are they all with the program too? I mean, do they regularly, and are you expanding that list? I'm thinking of, I know Mr. Smith is very involved in the Step Up program. Do the Step Up people regularly mention 95? And I don't mean to put you on spot or on blast, but there's a number of organizations that deal with our students on a regular basis. Do we make sure they all get that this 95 attendance rate is important and that they are communicating it as best they can to their participants and families?
Yes. So two that come to mind would be the Urban League, our Youth Attendance Navigator program, as well as Latino Center of the Midlands, their P2S program. We meet quarterly with all of the staff that are housed within our building that work with our school support liaisons and our elementary assistant principals, as well as any staff in the building. We meet, we come together, we have a beginning-of-the-year meeting, we have an end-of-the-year wrap-up meeting, but in between, the teams come together, we review data, we look at the students who are currently being served by those programs, and look at ways how we can better build and collaborate together. But yes, we meet often, we give, we provide them a training, all of the updates around Strive for 95, and then specifically in the schools that they're working in, they know the goal. They know where the school is at with the attendance data, and then they're looking to help grow that green. We call it grow the green, the not chronic domain, in the Strive for Nine, Strive for 95 attendance dashboard. And so they are aware of it, and we work them, work with them very closely and provide that training to them. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Juarez?
Yes, I just have a quick question. Could you remind me, who is this Educational Consortium? Who is that?
So it's, it's BoWIC, it's Metro Omaha, it's made up of the 12 area school districts. So Omaha Public, Bellevue.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Great information. Most people have kind of hit almost all of the questions that I had, but just really quick thinking. Clearly, middle school and high school are the bigger challenge. You pointed out that it's just easier at the elementary level to get parent involvement. I think you see that a lot where it trickles off when kids get older. And of course, our students that are driving, it's, a lot of other barriers can prevent kids from attending school. I'm curious, in, you have the monthly professional development. Does any of the professional development give any of the schools an opportunity to sit down and collaborate together, to maybe come, like I know you have the attendance teams, but I'm just wondering, do any of those give the schools the opportunity to come together, to brainstorm, to collaborate on what's working at one school versus another? I mean, if we look at high schools, maybe we have better attendance at one versus another. Do they ever get an opportunity to try to?
They do. Every month, the school support liaisons and the elementary assistant principals come together, and they together, and they have an opportunity to collaborate. In fact, we keep a running list of what are some of the activities, what's working in your building? And, and so we ask them, we ask them to share. So oftentimes, if we know something's working really well in a building, we'll ask those staff members to come and share it to the team. And they might just tweak something just a little bit, and then it works really well in their building. And then recently, with our work with Moic and the attendance cohort, we do have schools that are coming together. So not only are we working with schools within OPS, but we're also working with schools in the surrounding area, because we know mobility, but we also know it's, we're all part of the community, and we want kids in school. We know that that's where they need to be, and, and so we're all working together. And just, we just met last week, two days, October twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, middle schools and then elementary schools. And everyone just was really in awe of the different work that other people are doing, and people were just stealing little nuggets here and this here. So yes, we are, we are providing that.
Great answer. I, I, you hit it on the nose, what is it about?
Thank you.
You said, it takes all of us. It's not just for school, it's the district-wide and community-wide. So, thank you much.
Very much.
Great work.
Ms. Krackey. Ms. Krackey.
How are we providing help to the student who is late to the bus, or not able to get to the bus, or family members are detaining him or her at home? Are we aware of, do we go out and pick them up? Now, we can't do that every day, so then what do we do to change that? I know there are efforts where someone in the building will go out and pick them up when they're aware of that, but I want to know, what are we doing generally if we see that, that person was late on the bus, or whatever? What are we going to do? Alarm clock is always a good reason.
We do have alarm clocks. We have some really great, fun color alarm clocks, and they're very loud. Yes, then we do. We give it to them, and actually, the kids talk about them, and then somebody else wants one. But really, it starts with having a conversation with the parent. We really want parents to understand the academic impact, that whether you're late to school, or you miss a day, every minute truly does count. And so if you're late every day, and you're in first grade, and it's twenty minutes out of your school day, and it's reading during that time, you're missing reading. If you're in middle school or high school, and it's a math class, and you're, and you're leaving every day early, and math builds, right, foundational? And so we really have conversations with students as they get older, because students have a responsibility with their attendance as well. And we make, we make sure that it's appropriate for their age, the conversation that we're having. But sitting down with the parents and letting them, you know, share with us what's going on, and then we are able to address, maybe if they're saying the student is refusal, or we want to find out what the reason they're not in school. But we also want to help parents understand the academic impact, so that they will help us in getting the students to school.
This I know. I'm still going back to the bus stop, and I'm going back to the child that doesn't get there, and what are we doing to get that child there? Some of them, it's those kind of absences that kick them out, or they just get so frustrated because they're not at school, or they don't go that day, the bus missed them. Are we, I, I know in the past that we have gone out and picked them up sometimes, because we knew what was going on. But are we still doing that? And that is a lot on the staff, you know, to have to do that. And are there certain people that go out there, their counselors, their, somebody who is signed to those schools?
Well, I, I don't, I'm not aware of anything specific at the school where they have some type of transportation that's lined up outside of busing. It really is about helping the family understand how we need to get the student to the bus stop on time. There are situations where maybe we'll do a home visit, and in the conversation in that home visit with the family, the student will get ready, and in that moment, the student would be transported to school. But I'm not aware of anything on a regular basis.
Well, I just know that, that in the past, that that has been a concern. So I just, maybe each school is taking care of that on their own, because there are some students who have so many problems at home, and the mother isn't there either. So that has a lot to do with it. And I mean, it's just, in a large school system like ours, that can be a problem.
Yes.
And I just want to know, and I know you're aware at your level, if that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our penultimate presentation for the evening will be Ethic of Care Goal Five with Charles Wakefield.
Good evening. Try that again. Thank you. Good evening, Board. Okay.
Penultimate is second to the end.
Can I step away and start over? You burned my flow, Mr. Red. Good evening, Board members. The Environmental Stewardship Plan is the focus of this presentation. We recognize the connection between environmental challenges our students will face in our mission to prepare our students for success. So our responsibility as the district to do our part in mitigating these challenges, and to guide our community and our students to do the same. Environmental stewardship has been a priority for the district even back over two decades. Continuing this ongoing effort in accordance with the Strategic Plan of Action, the Environmental Stewardship Plan was created. It lays out, lays a path forward for the district to reduce environmental impact, implement innovative strategies, and improve student health, and engage our community in becoming better students of our natural environment. A wide range of stakeholders from across the district and the Omaha community were engaged in the planning process, and the district thanks all those who participated in this effort. This finalized plan was presented to the Board of Education in August of two thousand and twenty-three. If I recall correctly, over the summer, we also presented the goals to the Board of Education as well. The plan was developed by students, staff, and community to gain that, to gain that input as we go forward. And the Environmental Stewardship Plan has five goals, with detailed strategies that focus on greenhouse gas emissions, building energy consumption, waste reduction, water usage, and student and staff engagement. And with that, I will take any questions.
All right. Thank you. Questions, colleagues? Ms. Juarez.
Okay, so my question is based on having gone and worked in the schools, you know, and my para job that I do once, once in a while. And I'm wondering if we're ever taking a focus on reducing the use of plastic bags? I know that, I mean, I realize how convenient they are to use, because I use them. But I, and trying to figure out from the school perspective, I mean, I see even when we're, when I'm doing the laundry, you know, the huge plastic bags that are in something like that, you know, besides all the plastic bags that are in our wastebaskets, I don't know if that's something that we're taking a look at, and realistically, what would be the alternative? And I wondered if you could comment on that.
So waste reduction is one of our focus strategies for this semester, and long path to get to plastic bags, but I promise I'll get there. One of our key strategies right now is tray stacking. So in our lunchroom, we have the paper fibrous trays that students use to eat. And if students just throw those randomly in trash bags, the average cafeteria may take forty or fifty trash bags full of trays out to the dumpster. So forty or fifty trash bags. We stack trays in almost every school, and something we're very focused on now. We can get that forty to fifty down to two or three trash bags full of trays. So dramatic reduce in our plastic. Additionally, we've had some high schools approach us through student engagement about the silverware packets and the plastic wrap we provide to students, and indicating that at their high school, that most students don't use the knife and the spoon, only use the fork, and have asked us. So we began purchasing individually wrapped forks for those schools, and not providing the entire packet as a pilot program, to see what sort of support we get from our students with that.
Little bit at a time. Small steps.
Ms. Full.
Thank you. I'm wondering, so in the plan that was developed, was that five percent reduction the goal all along, or that's just what was projected? Or was there a specific percentage of reduction that was in the plan that was the goal?
So we began the plan with the idea that we wanted to look at a five percent reduction in overall energy usage. Based on our, our work with Verdis, our consultant, we felt that was achievable, but also a stretch for us. If you look at our specific targets, not every target is at a five percent. Each target is set individually, based on where we thought we could make that impact.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question, just, if you could please jog my memory, I don't remember if farm-to-table initiatives were in the plan at all. And what I specifically mean is having more gardens at the school, or buying produce that's, you know, grown locally, and then sending that to our schools, like as a way to reduce energy consumption? Is that discussed at all in the plan?
Absolutely. We cannot serve produce grown at a school in our school cafeteria. That's part of the school lunch program, and that would be a violation. But we do practice local grown vegetables and products frequently. In fact, our Nutrition Services Department leads the state in Nebraska foods that we purchase and support across the, the region. Logan, or aronia berries, I have to get the right one, thank you, was a very local product that we tried out last year for the first time across the state. They're native, they grow naturally, you can find them in Fontanel Forest, actually, if you go hiking. But we began using those in our cafeteria with our students and teaching them about local produce and local products.
All right, thank you. And that always just has a special place in my heart, because I used to work at the big garden and help students at lots of schools in OPS grow their gardens. So it's interesting that we don't let those produ, those products be used in our cafeteria. So I just learned something new. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erdberger.
Thank you, Mr. Head. I'm excited about the stacking trays and the forks only. It occurs to me that probably everybody at this table, probably all fifty-two thousand of our students, have some idea that would be a really good idea. Do we actively solicit, I mean, they're not all good ideas, granted, but do we actively solicit suggestions? Because, you know, even a stopped clock is right twice a day, so that we're bound to get some good ideas. And I'm just wondering what process we have for finding out who's in the trenches and what ideas they might have.
One of the key engagement goals in the plan is a green team at each school. A green team, so a, a team of students and staff that focus on environmentalism in that school. The fork idea actually came from our high school students on a green team. We have another green team that is developing an arboretum outside to look at native plants and create some native landscaping for us. A lot of our green teams work on composting, looking at composting across the district. So a variety of things that our students are driving for us.
I think we, we can also, we'll send out that Environmental Stewardship Plan again too. It's a great document with a lot of the answers to this information.
All right, any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final presentation, the last presentation for the evening, is going to be Ethic of Care Goal Seven. And Kayla Morrissey.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kayla Morrissey. Excuse me. I'm the Director of Communications for Omaha Public Schools, and excited to be here with you tonight. So District Communications has worked on a multi-year effort of strategic communications and public relations best practice. Strategic communications should be, and in Omaha Public Schools, is a four-step process. The steps are planning, research, planning, implementation, and evaluation. We re, we research the topic, our target audiences, their beliefs, and gaps in awareness. We then plan how to achieve identified measurable outcomes. We then implement communication strategies based on best practice, and then we evaluate our organization's success against those predetermined metrics. For many years, District Communications has evaluated data in real time, on weekly and monthly basis. In addition, we also do an annual review based on our staff and family communication surveys. A foundational item in a recent communication survey was content review and accessibility online and in print. Our messages need to be accessible for differing levels of English language proficiency, accessible for assistive technology, and more. Throughout Omaha Public Schools, we found materials were written formally and often at a collegiate level. We heard through both of our communication surveys that ninety percent of respondents are very li, are very likely to read a paragraph of information on a single topic. But they're not going to stick around for a full page on a single topic. Only ten percent said that they would complete an entire page of a passage. This tells us that a three-page school memo about drop-off is not being read. We also regularly look at open rates on our newsletters, page views, and engagement. We regularly look to K-12 industry standards, best practices from leading public relations associations, and case studies from in and outside of education, like storytelling strategies from the Mayo Clinic. Communication science determines the strategies that we use. Transforming digital access for staff, families, and our community has been at the heart of our work. We're meeting audiences where they are, online. Thank you to the Board for your support, to IMS for their partnership on the district-wide project, and staff from every school and department who played a role in the success of launching a new website and mass notification system recently. In addition to being its own Strategic Plan of Action goal, our new digital platform is central to our voice, accessibility, and care. A functional principle of our new site was shorter and more active sentences, centralized content that's displayed in multiple locations but housed in one, which means that we cut down on the potential for error, and we manage our content more efficiently. We also review data from our site to track what is most important to our staff and families on an ongoing basis. For our work on our district communications platform, we received national recognition. I have booklets to share that highlight the work that we've done that I'll share with Dr. McFarland. Another big step forward was the Omaha Public Schools' Style and Voice Guide. It's an actionable tool available to every single employee. I also have copies of that that I'll share with Dr. McFarland. We recognize that each teacher, principal, and staff member is a communication, is a communicator, an ambassador for our district. The guide gives quick, clear, detailed steps on how to build an authentic and accessible presence in all communication, and we speak with one district voice. Like I said, everyone is a communicator. We support schools and staff in a variety of ways. We've seen success centralizing information, putting district news, articles, and announcements on all school homepages. We've made one OPS the one-stop shop for staff. Whether they're looking for district news, or the instructional framework, it's the place for staff to get the information that's important to them. We provide regular professional development for principals, using communications data to guide our recommendations. District Communications was thrilled to work with office staff in a virtual training recently. We highlighted the connection that office staff make with our families. Through principal updates, we've proactively counseled leaders on how to address important issues and convey protocols with care, empowering more people as knowledgeable ambassadors of our school district. We continue to evaluate and evolve our team's work. Through this data-driven and strategic work, we have taken the readability grade level that was often collegiate level to middle school and early high school level, which makes it easier for everyone. Real-time data shows us that more people are tuning in to inside OPS, engaging on social media, and visiting OPS.org. Visits to OPS.org have visit, have doubled in the last year, and doubled again from the year before that. We've taken the data to help schools evaluate what the communicate, what they communicate through shorter communication with more snackable bits of information. District Communication has made strides in ensuring communication echoes our ethic of care, and, but there is more to be done. We will continually go through the four-step strategic communication process to ensure we are meeting the needs of the community we get to serve. In addition, we'll continue to offer coaching and training for staff. An example of that is later this month, Chief Maxwell will present to college and career academies and pathways leaders. We appreciate the opportunity to highlight our recent work, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdberger. Ms. Erdberger.
Thank you. Um, and, you know, I hope we've all said it enough before, but the websites are beautiful. Nicely, nicely done. In terms of how the schools communicate with their families, I don't know what I'm talking about again, but are, is there more than one system like Dojo and something else? Or does, do all the schools use Dojo as their vehicle for communicating with their parents?
As far as the official communication platform, that would be Blackboard, which is now Final Site. Um, they went through a recent ownership change, so they're now Final Site, which is why the double name. Um, I know there's other tools that other teams like our Curriculum Instruction Support Team might use, but as far as our official communication tools, they're Blackboard Final Site.
Do you have any way of evaluating whether that's what in fact this, a couple of my schools have told me they use Dojo. I won't name any names, but so it, I guess my question is, in the interest of uniformity and so on and so forth, is that on your to-do list? Maybe not at the top, but just make sure that all of our schools are using that same, whatever the platform is they should be using?
Yep, so we're continually working with other departments to talk through what the consistency is for communication. So what are the channels we're using for which communication to families, um, so that we're providing that consistency with it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I fit right in with those readers, I'll tell you. Ten minutes, I want to be done.
Uh, thank you. So before we adjourn for the evening, and I know time is getting a little taut, uh, I'd like to go over our next steps. Uh, as it stands, there are currently 10 remaining Strategic Plan of Action goals that have not been covered either during this update nor the initial one. Uh, and those 10 goals are academics, uh, Goal Five, staffing, Goal Two, financial accountabilities, Goal, Goals One, Four, Five, Six and Seven. Yeah, so there's 10. So I am going to begin working with Mr. Ray and Dr. McFarland on beginning to scheduling, uh, to schedule a process, uh, to come back to the Board to update all 10 of those goals in approximately 18 months. So just so that we're all aware, that is going to be the final 18-month cycle for this current Strategic Plan of Action. And also, uh, knowing that a goal update every 18 months is not enough, I would like to remind each of you that you have access to the Strategic Plan of Action Implementation Dashboard. Uh, as outlined in our Strategic Plan of Action, this dashboard is updated every six months and there are currently about two years' worth of updates available. Uh, if you have trouble accessing this dashboard, if you'd like to link recent to your inbox, please let Dr. McFarland know and we will make sure that you have the link as well as the requisite viewing permissions from IMS.
I would love those links.
And with that, that is, that will conclude our presentations for the evening.
All right, thank you. And before we adjourn, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ray for some closing comments.
First, I want to thank the staff that spent a lot of time preparing for this and constantly working on the goals that the Board approved as part of the Strategic Plan. I also want to acknowledge that Casey is returning to his high school. Um, so I think that's important as well. So thank you, Casey. Um, and also, which I think Jane was, were you teaching at that time here? Just a little bit. But, uh, thank you to the team, thank you to the Board for their questions. This is a lot of information. Um, and if you think of any additional questions as we move through this, don't hesitate to send them our way. Um, as Dr. Crowe said, we'll work next on those next goals that we, as part of the Strategic Plan, outline the 18-month time period. So, um, but at any time, if you have any questions about implementation, um, there's so much more behind the scenes with the Strategic Plan as we look at implementing these goals. So thank you for your time and your questions.
Thank you.
All right.
Dr. McFarland, I'll send you an email. I'm learning.
All right, thank you everyone for being here. Let the record reflect, the Board workshop adjourned at 7:49 PM.
Thank you for mentioning about how we could get access to that. I appreciate that.